Good afternoon, everyone. We're here for an emergency meeting and it is, there's Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Bong, Doug Copenhaver are present, councilperson, vice president Delia is on speaker phone, telephone, and so is councilperson Mauk. So, at this point in time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries five to zero, and the item, agenda item is discussion of potential action of COVID-19. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. As the council's aware, after a series of conference calls that we've had with, that we had with the governor and his staff on Friday, late Friday evening, the governor issued executive order number 2020, 20-20, dated April the 3rd, 2020, which provides the Berkeley County Council and Berkeley Morgan County Health Department, the ability to impose additional restrictions upon residents, businesses, and public bodies of Berkeley County. We met on Saturday.
Saturday morning was basically from 9:15 in the morning till 9:30 at night for me.
Me too.
Yeah, and we got a lot done, and it was the city of Martinsburg being represented by the city manager Mark Baldwin, the mayor was on the phone, Ken Sayer was on the phone for the city, it was myself, Alan Davis, Mr. Bentley, Bill Kearns, and Dr. Reedy in meetings trying to work through this process for the order we put in place.
So, the order that was put in place on Saturday, councilperson Copenhaver signed as well as Dr. Reedy, and it was attested to this morning, although we did, we did put it in place Saturday, mailed it out to everyone Saturday, late Saturday evening, I think around 9:00 or 9:30.
I was involved in that conversation as well.
Yes.
You were. And I think the council has received that order.
So, in order to comply with executive order 2020 from Governor Justice and the order that the count, that this council and the Berkeley Morgan Health Department put into place dated April the 4th, 2020, your staff is recommending that we put the following procedures in place for our employees, which would become effective at 12:01 a.m. Tuesday, April the 7th, 2020. The council shall provide, and this is, and I think I provided it to you early this morning, Andy Blake put together some tables, tables of what surrounding states have done, Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Ohio, what, what they put into place as well as some of the surrounding counties have done in the city of Martinsburg. So, this is similar to particularly what the city of Martinsburg has done. We're proposing that the council provides all full-time employees an additional 80 hours of sick leave to be added to any accumulated sick leave totals except for the full-time employees of the assessors office. As you know, the assessors office only works 35 hours a week, so they would receive 70 additional hours of sick leave. The scheduling of the sick leave shall be accomplished according to an employee's classification as essential or non-essential as set forth herein below. These categories of employees are already in place through our inclement weather policy, which not only deals with inclement weather but also man-made and natural disasters. A category one essential employee is any employee in a department whose function is considered necessary for public safety. As I said, during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster, employees in this category include but are not limited to police, fire, emergency services, homeland security, emergency medical, and emergency communications employees. Law enforcement personnel includes not only our uniformed personnel but also any administrative staff as designated by the sheriff, same way with central dispatch would be our telecommunicator, telecommunicators, supervisory personnel, and again, any administrative, administrative staff is designated, department of homeland security and emergency management personnel including administrative staff is designated, and firefighters including any administrative staff that may be assigned.
Mr. Bentley.
These employees shall have 80 hours of eligible sick leave added to their existing accumulations of sick leave, but shall not be eligible to use it until the state of emergency expires and scheduling permits. What we're trying to do is treat all of our employees the same, and you'll see why we're proposing this as we go down further, no matter, and this is for full-time employees only, so no matter whether you're considered category one essential, category two essential, or category three non-essential, you're going to get the, you're going to get the extra vacation added to your accumulation, or sick leave, I'm sorry, sick leave. A category two essential employee is any employee of a department whose function is not considered necessary for public safety, but whose presence may be necessary during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster. Employees in this category include but are not limited to the county administrator, IT department personnel, fleet services personnel, all facilities department personnel to include building custodians, and those employees involved in ice and/or snow removal, of course, we don't have to worry about that. So, employees in this classification, of course, would be the county administrator as well as any administrative and professional support staff as designated, court security personnel, which would be our court marshals and deputy court marshals, facilities personnel to include building maintenance and custodial personnel, and information technology including administrative staff. With this category of employee, it would require some, some scheduling, which would is different than what we're going to be doing, what we're proposing for the non, the category three non-essential. With the category three non-essential personnel, you're seeing that any employee of a department whose function is not considered necessary for public safety and whose presence is not needed during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster, employees in this category include but are not limited to the county administrator, IT department personnel, fleet services personnel, all facilities department personnel to include building custodians, and those employees involved in ice and/or snow removal, of course, we don't have to worry about that. So, employees in this classification, of course, would be the county administrator as well as any administrative and professional support staff as designated, court security personnel, which would be our court marshals and deputy court marshals, facilities personnel to include building maintenance and custodial personnel, and information technology including administrative staff. With this category of employee, it would require some, some scheduling, which would is different than what we're going to be doing, what we're proposing for the non, the category three non-essential. With the category three non-essential personnel, you're seeing that any employee of a department whose function is not considered necessary for public safety and whose presence is not needed during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster, employees in this category include but are not limited to the county administrator, IT department personnel, fleet services personnel, all facilities department personnel to include building custodians, and those employees involved in ice and/or snow removal, of course, we don't have to worry about that. So, employees in this classification, of course, would be the county administrator as well as any administrative and professional support staff as designated, court security personnel, which would be our court marshals and deputy court marshals, facilities personnel to include building maintenance and custodial personnel, and information technology including administrative staff. With this category of employee, it would require some, some scheduling, which would is different than what we're going to be doing, what we're proposing for the non, the category three non-essential. With the category three non-essential personnel, you're seeing that any employee of a department whose function is not considered necessary for public safety and whose presence is not needed during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster, employees in this category include but are not limited to the county administrator, IT department personnel, fleet services personnel, all facilities department personnel to include building custodians, and those employees involved in ice and/or snow removal, of course, we don't have to worry about that. So, employees in this classification, of course, would be the county administrator as well as any administrative and professional support staff as designated, court security personnel, which would be our court marshals and deputy court marshals, facilities personnel to include building maintenance and custodial personnel, and information technology including administrative staff. With this category of employee, it would require some, some scheduling, which would is different than what we're going to be doing, what we're proposing for the non, the category three non-essential. With the category three non-essential personnel, you're seeing that any employee of a department whose function is not considered necessary for public safety and whose presence is not needed during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster, this would include most administrative and clerical personnel. What we're, we're proposing for these folks is that we take the workforce assigned to those departments and let's use, I'll just use engineering and permits as an example. We would, we would, all the full-time employees assigned to the engineering permit department would actually be divided, we would take the workforce and divide it.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're here for an emergency meeting and it is, there's Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Bong, Doug Copen Haver are present, councilperson, Vice President Delia is on speaker telephone, and so is councilperson Malt. So, at this point in time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries five to zero, and the item, the agenda item is discussion of potential action of COVID-19. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. As the council's aware, after a series of conference calls that we've had with, that we had with the governor and his staff on Friday, late Friday evening, the governor issued executive order number 2020, twenty dash twenty, dated April the third, 2020, which provides the Berkeley County Council and Berkeley Morgan County Health Department the ability to impose additional restrictions upon residents, businesses, and public bodies of Berkeley County. We met on Saturday.
Saturday morning was basically from nine fifteen in the morning till nine thirty at night for me.
Me, me too.
Yeah, and we got a lot done, and it was the city of Martinsburg being represented by city manager Mark Baldwin, the mayor was on the phone, Ken Sayer was on the phone for the city, it was myself, Alan Davis, Mr. Bentley, Bill Kearns, and Dr. Reedy in meetings trying to work through this process for the, our order we put in place.
So, the order that was put in place on Saturday, councilperson Copen Haver signed as well as Dr. Reedy, and it was attested to this morning, although we did, we did put it in place Saturday, mailed it out to everyone Saturday, late Saturday evening, I think around nine or nine thirty. And I think-
I was involved in that conversation as well.
Yes.
You were. I was on the teleconference.
And I think the council has received that order. So, in order to comply with executive order 2020 from Governor Justice and the order that the count, that this council and the Berkeley Morgan Health Department put into place dated April the fourth, 2020, your staff is recommending that we put the following procedures in place for our employees, which would become effective at 12:01 a.m. Tuesday, April the seventh, 2020. The council shall provide, and this is, and I think I provided it to you early this morning, Andy Blake put together some tables, tables of what surrounding states have done, Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Ohio, what, what they put into place as well as some of the surrounding counties have done in the city of Martinsburg. So, this is similar to particularly what the city of Martinsburg has done. We're proposing that the council provides all full-time employees an additional eighty hours of sick leave to be added to any accumulated sick leave totals except for the full-time employees of the assessors office. As you know, the assessors office only works thirty-five hours a week, so they would receive seventy additional hours of sick leave. The scheduling of the sick leave shall be accomplished according to an employee's classification as essential or non-essential set forth herein below. These categories of employees are already in place through our inclement weather policy, which not only deals with inclement weather but also man-made and natural disasters. A category one essential employee is any employee in a department whose function is considered necessary for public safety. As I said, during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster, employees in this category include but are not limited to police, fire, emergency services, homeland security, emergency medical, and emergency communications employees. Law enforcement personnel includes not only our uniform personnel but also any administrative staff as designated by the sheriff, same way with central dispatch would be our telecommunications, supervisory personnel, and again, any administrative, administrative staff is designated, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management personnel, including administrative staff is designated, and firefighters, including any administrative staff that may be assigned.
Mr. Bentley.
These employees shall have eighty hours of eligible sick leave added to their existing accumulations of sick leave, but shall not be eligible to use it until the state of emergency expires and scheduling permits. What we're trying to do is treat all of our employees the same, and you'll see why we're proposing this as we go down further. No matter, and this is for full-time employees only, so no matter whether you're considered category one essential, category two essential, or category three non-essential, you're going to get the, you're going to get the extra vacation added to your accumulation, or sick leave, I'm sorry, sick leave. A category two essential employee is any employee of a department whose function is not considered necessary for public safety, but whose presence may be necessary during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster. Employees in this category include but are not limited to the county administrator, IT department personnel, fleet services personnel, all facilities department personnel, to include building custodians, and those employees involved in ice and/or snow removal, of course, we don't have to worry about that. So, employees in this classification, of course, would be the county administrator as well as any administrative and professional support staff as designated, court security personnel, which would be our court marshals and deputy court marshals, facilities personnel to include building maintenance and custodial personnel, and information technology, including administrative staff. With this category of employee, it would require some, some scheduling, which would, is different than what we're going to be doing, what we're proposing for the non, the category three non-essential. With the category three non-essential personnel, you're seeing that any employee of a department whose function is not considered necessary for public safety and whose presence is not needed during a weather incident, general emergency, or disaster, this would include most administrative and clerical personnel. What we're, we're proposing for these folks is that we take the workforce assigned to those departments and let's use, I'll just use engineering and permits as an example. We would, we would, all the full-time employees assigned to the engineering permit department would actually be divided, we would take the workforce and divide it in, in two. So, if we have ten, ten full-time employees assigned to engineering, we divide them into groups of five. For the first week, one half of the workforce would be scheduled to perform the normal duties assigned to the department, so-
How does that affect, like, people like Brian, the department head? I mean, he'll probably end up maybe have to work all the time.
So, so, well, most, actually, most of your department heads will.
Right.
We'll give them-
They still have the eighty hours.
They'll have the eighty hours, and we will give them some flexibility-
Right.
-as the future, as future opportunity presents themselves.
Correct.
So, we're taking half, half of the workforce will stay at home and shelter in place. We will be practicing the shelter in place as outlined to the greatest extent possible, leaving their homes in places of abode for essential purposes only. Number one of the order that was passed this week. So, half of those folks would, would work, the other half would stay at home. The next week, it would flip. The half, half the employees that were sheltered in place the week before will come to work, the other half that work will shelter in place. Now, the advantages to, to this is, rather than place any of our employees in layoff statuses, these employees would all remain on call. So, for example, if we only have, I'll use grant writers as an example, if I have one grant writer assigned to work and the other one assigned to be at home, and suddenly something happens with the grant writer that was assigned to work, say that she got the flu and couldn't work, then I'd call the other grant writer in if necessary to take care of any, any duties that needed to be done. So, all those, all, half of the workforce would be sheltering at home, they would be on call if, if, if necessary. So, going back to the category two essential employees, we may not be able to do that, we may not be able to evenly split, and I'll use Gary as an example, you have eleven in your department, he may not be able to say, okay, you, this half is gonna work this week and this half is gonna stay home because of some of the unique duties that they do as far as house numbering and data mining and things like that. So, he'll have to be, he'll have to have some flexibility with the scheduling of his, of his personnel, same way with facilities. We are currently down, not due to COVID-19, but we're currently down three full-time custodians. So, we're already operating with a bare skeleton crew, so we may have to work with, with those folks a little bit to make sure that building, custodial, and cleaning is, is being done. I talked to Mike Lang early this morning, court security personnel, he can pretty much divide those folks in half in accordance with the guidelines that are proposed, and still make sure that we provide court security as well as security on the doors to, to all of our buildings as we have been practicing for the past, for the past couple of weeks. So, we still will be limiting access to the building for essential purposes only, we'll just have a skeleton staff present to, to continue to provide service, and again, we will be complying to the letter with the guidelines that this council put in place April third. So, that's our proposal.
The only thing, only other thing I want to put on record is that all our full-time staff that's now cooperating on their, our health insurance, will they, will anything that be altered, or will they be able to keep the, or continue to, they have the same benefit package?
This will not affect their benefits, retirement, or health insurance at all.
Make it public.
Correct. And because they are on, I'll call it county-imposed leave, we would waive the, the requirement that you be present onsite for eleven days during the course of the month in order to get your accumulations.
Right.
Gary and I met early, early this morning and went through that, we have it, we have it worked out.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Dan, Lang?
That's true. I think he's clear.
All right. Dan? Dan? All right.
I'm good.
I'm surprised you muted yourself. All right, everything-
The only thing, one other thing I do want to point out, this only gets us through the next four weeks.
That's exactly right.
So, we're only proposing for eighty days, or I'm sorry, eighty hours for our full-time employees. So, you figure, you know, one half of the department will work this week, the other half will be off, next week it'll flip-flop over. So, this will actually get us the eighty hours, by splitting it that way will get us actually a hundred and sixty hours of office time. So, we're, we're, this will get us into early May, and then we'll have to assess the situation at that time.
All right, need a motion to-
Mr. President, I wonder if I shouldn't add the on-call priority?
If you get called in, you must come in.
Right.
I think so, only because that's the whole reason to do this. I mean, if we need you, we need you to come in.
I will add that.
All right, so everybody understand that, that we're gonna modify it by saying, if you, you basically are on call, if you get called in to come in, you must come in, or this, I guess, pretty much you lose this benefit, all right? That's the whole reason it's on. We need to be able to, to keep the county government running, we need to be able to make sure that anybody that, if we need them, they're more than willing to come in, which most of, if not all our employees are, and that's the whole reason to, to do what we are, or it's one of the reasons, not the whole reason, but it's one of the reasons that we're doing this the way we are. Anybody wanting to make a motion to, to adopt or approve this, this order?
I'm with-
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 And this gives you permission?
Ms. Malt? Aye?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Do what?
Gives you permission.
Yes, sir. All right. All right, any other action? We're, I think we're good, so I need a motion to recess.
Wait, wait, what's Jefferson doing?
I don't know what Jefferson County, but the city of Martinsburg on this, and, and that's how-
It's on the matrix.
Talking to Mark Baldwin, we felt that that was a pretty good plan.
Well, Dr. Reedy is health officer, he's a county-
Currently, no, yeah.
And the health department is leading the charge.
Gary said that in Jefferson County, non-essential are on paid administrative leave.
What about the document that-
The order that I put in place yesterday?
Yesterday?
Oh, it's actually Saturday night, around nine thirty. What's your questions on that?
That's been adopted.
I had authority to deal with that, I asked you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but I wasn't, didn't make the paper this morning or anything else.
Yes, it's, it's in place.
We did not send it out to all the media outlets yet, only because I was waiting for it to be attested to, which we just got half a pair, sixty minutes ago, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so-
That's in effect now?
Yes.
Although if, and we sent it out to the health department, and if you go around to a lot of the commercial establishments, the big box stores, they're aware of it and they're already following the protocol. We've, we've gotten calls about lines at grocery stores and-
What, what was?
Loads were, had been stolen yesterday.
Uh-huh.
Loads have been stolen.
Well, after we, after we worked the order out, I actually took two hours to go around and do surveys. I went to six commercial retailers, I went to hotel, told them everything I was doing. Some of them closed. Throughout the nation was allowing five people per thousand per feet, which is a business that loads of them have been, but to Aldi's, Aldi's was only allowing fifty people in their store, which is about right, that, that two point five is why we did that, the reason why we did that. But they're good, and they were even wiping their carts off, their employee were wiping their carts off.
Yeah, I saw a girl, the Aldi, new Aldi.
Right.
Out, out.
That's where I was at. So, then, then Best Buy right next door, you'll see they had a canopy up, and they haven't let anybody in their store from the public for two weeks.
Public lobby shut down.
Then I went to the liquor store, talked to them, and they were over-regulating by a hundred percent. Went to Holiday Inn to make sure, I told them about the fourteen day minimum stay and asked them to please get it out to their hotel motel and let them know, didn't do this without checking with someone first, and actually, I can't check all the businesses. And then I went to Martin's in Martinsburg in one old courthouse square and talked to Martin's corporate headquarters. And so, they asked to be, emailed the order, we emailed it to them. By Sunday morning, they not only were trapped, were only letting people in one door and out the other and keeping count, but they put directional errors on the floor, how you need to travel through their store. And not one person, not one, said anything negative, they said, well, do whatever you need us to do, each and every.
Mr. President, we've lost our video streaming, so we need to-
Okay. All right.
You got crashed.
Okay. All right. Motion recessed? All right. We are recessed.
Thank you.
All right, now you want to sign something.
All right, thanks.
Yep, see ya.
I had to go to Moorefield yesterday, run a night, had a night, and came back home.